Well, thank you very much. Good evening. Glad and good to be back again with some good news and steady progress towards the rail transit district development Phase One. I just thought I'd take an opportunity just to update the board on a couple of developments before we hand it over to the folks that are looking for the changes to the covenant, which was signed back in 2000. I think the last time I was here, I believe I shared with the board the letter we had got from Masworks, again, committing to the $6 million grant. I've had a follow-up conversation with them, with Mr. Gainer as the landowner, also Campanelli-Thorn dyke on the line as well, to brief Masworks on the progress that everybody has made. Just recently, actually last week, the Board of Selectmen approved and signed a very comprehensive development agreement with Mr. Gainer, and that is now fully executed, minus just working out a few details on one of the exhibits related to some alternate funding arrangements that we're working through. So that's obviously great, great progress. Masworks, again, on the telephone call, committed that, based on the steady and significant progress all parties have made on this particular project, that there is a flexibility with that 30 November date that was put in the original letter, so the grant is still secure and is still supportive of this overall project. Next week, I expect that we will bring before the Board of Selectmen the two remaining documents that they need to approve, one being the development agreement between the town and Campanelli-Thorn dyke, and then that alternate funding agreement that I just mentioned, which is one of the exhibits to those development agreements. And then lastly, which is the reason for being here tonight, is the fact that, you know, the covenant that was signed back in 2000, some 15 years ago, there were some changes that the parties wanted to make to the covenant to support this particular project, and based on the original covenant requires a joint approval by the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board to approve any changes to the actual covenant. So what you should have in your packets are the actual covenant from 2000, as well as the covenant amendments that are being proposed for change, and give the board an opportunity to ask the applicants some questions, or Attorney Mead or myself, if necessary, related to that. Given the timeline, and I know that Mr. Geisinger from Campanelli-Thorn dyke can talk a little bit about their timetable, but we were hopeful that, you know, as we go through this tonight and ask some questions, that we would like to try to tentatively schedule a joint meeting next Thursday. All five of the Board of Selectmen members are available. We're just waiting to hear on how many of the Planning Board members could be available for that joint meeting, to kind of review the final, you know, covenant amendment and be prepared to discuss and perhaps vote on that, so that we can continue to move forward with their submission to the Planning Board for their site plan approval modification. So that's the update from our end, and so at this point, Attorney Mead, I don't know if you have anything you want to add that I may have missed in that brief introduction, but...
No, I think it's probably good to hear from the owner and the developer to understand why the changes are being requested in the covenant first, and then we can go from there.
Okay. Any questions for me before I ... Thank you very much.
(inaudible)
So maybe what I'll start to do is walk through them, and then, because there are going to be questions, and then perhaps both Mr. Geisinger and Mr. Gainer can address them. So I think that the first big change that you notice in the covenant here is the mix between one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. So the covenant, excuse me, the covenant originally requires 70/30 split, and they're looking for a 65/35 split on one-bedrooms versus two-bedrooms. So perhaps Mr. Geisinger can discuss that.
Before we delve into that, I'd just like to ask a more basic question, if I could, just to get all of us up to speed. So we've heard the term covenant, we've heard the term development agreement, and we're at least, I'm wondering if we could explain what exactly those documents are and what purpose they serve?
When the, when the, Mr. Gainer and the town originally worked on this proposal pre-2000, given the size of the parcel that it was, and what could potentially happen over there, and what the desires of the town were, and what was attractive to Mr. Gainer, there was an agreement to develop the area in a certain way that had certain impacts on the town, but protected it, the town, in other ways. And so in order to do that, it was essentially a three-step process. One was that the town entered into a covenant with Mr. Gainer, that they agreed that only certain things could happen on the land, regardless of what the zoning says, regardless of any other law, this is what could happen on the land and nothing else. And then layered on top of that was a development agreement, excuse me, was the zoning, which codified some of the parameters about how you could use certain portions of the rail transit district, and it created the rail transit district. And you have all amended the rail transit district, and you've seen what that zoning article is. So the next part was, how do you implement the covenant, and that would be through the zoning article, and that occurred then. Then the next step was to have a developer come in and develop the first phase of the rail transit district, and that was multifamily housing, and that was proposed and approved by JPI at the time. And those were multifamily four-rent units. And then the downturn hit. JPI went out of business, mostly in Massachusetts, and as you've heard from Mr. Gainer on many occasion, nothing happened for a long time because of the downturn in the economy. Given the change of circumstances, and in a, both from the town's perspective, Mr. Gainer's perspective, and what is marketable now and what is not marketable, changes needed to occur with the covenant, because there were some base rules about what could happen on the property. Changes needed to occur with the development agreement, because the original developer was gone now. And a development agreement protects the town and the developer in what's expected by both parties, aside from what zoning might require, or in addition to what the covenant might require. So there's a development agreement with Mr. Gainer now, who owns the rest, who owns the property, and there's a development agreement, excuse me, with Campanelli-Thorn dyke, who has a purchase and sale agreement for a portion of the property, and that goes to developing their property. And so under the covenant and the, that exists, if the covenant is to be amended, the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen need to jointly approve that by a supermajority vote. And that's the only way the covenant can be amended. Otherwise, the Board of Selectmen have the power within the town to enter into the development agreement with the developer and/or the landowner on any, in any instance. So that's kind of the basis of where we are. And so in order to essentially bring the covenant up to speed where the current market is, and what is, what the community is looking at, and we're going to talk initially about number of bedrooms essentially, and affordable versus market rate units. For instance, the town has taken a much different stand lately on affordability, and so because of the requirements to meet the subsidized housing inventory, if you build market rate units, you want to try to keep up as much as possible with the affordable unit requirements as well. So that's one of the first things that gets changed. So as I mentioned earlier, the number of two-bedroom units versus one-bedroom unit is controlled by the covenant for the first parcel of land, and that was originally set at 70 percent one-bedroom, 30 percent two-bedroom, oh, excuse me, 60 percent one-bedroom, 40 percent two-bedroom, 40 percent one-bedroom. And now that, they want to change that, so I'll let them explain what that changes.
Thank you, Lisa. Lloyd Geisinger, Thorn dyke Development. The 65/35 change from the 60/40, which we talked about at some length with the Selectmen last week, really is driven by a change in the, in the market that we're seeing. And specifically, most of the data out there is pretty clear that where, where you see a shift in the profile of the renter is between the two and the three-bedroom. The profile of the renter for a one-bedroom apartment and a two-bedroom apartment is almost indistinguishable. And from our perspective, the difference is that, as I think it's intuitive, it doesn't cost that much more to add that second bedroom. The difference between a one-bedroom apartment and a two-bedroom apartment, it still has a kitchen, it still has the bathrooms. It's, it's, the incremental cost of going from a one-bedroom to a two-bedroom is relatively small. And as rents have climbed in the western suburbs, and you see potential renters looking at rents of $1,900, $2,000 for a one-bedroom, and for another couple of hundred bucks a month, being able to get that extra room for the study, or the guest room, or whatever the case may be, what we're seeing more and more is that same renter profile, whether it's a young couple, or a professional person, or whatever the case may be, saying, "I'll take the two-bedroom," because they want that extra space. So this shift is really intended more to ensure that we are being market-responsive than anything else. We're all, I think, on the same page. We want this to be a successful project. And if we're delivering a product to the market that's inconsistent with what the renters' expectations are, that's very challenging. It's also frankly helpful for us on our pro forma, because the same metric applies in reverse. In other words, it's not that much more expensive to add that second bedroom, but the, and the return that we get on it is a little bit better. So all in all, it was part of how we were able to reduce the apartment count from the original JPI number of 500 down to 398, but the most important reason for doing this is to be responsive to what the renter is expecting in the marketplace today.
Mr. Geisinger, since you're still up there, the other change regarding the, essentially the configuration of the units has to do with the definition of study. So in the underlying covenant, there was a very specific definition of what a study is. Part of that was to be clear that you couldn't take a study and turn it into a bedroom. And there, there's a constructibility issue with the design of the proposed apartments, and so they're changing the definition of study to include a definition called flex space, which I'll let Mr. Geisinger explain, but that no unit can have both a flex space and a study.
The flex space notion is really one step removed even from a study, in terms of its functionality and its appropriateness as a bedroom. This is not a bedroom. You know, in the definition of a study, for example, you could have a window on the outside wall, which would make the study potentially more habitable. Our flex spaces are really little nooks that are, that occur as a result of the overall design of the building, and they in every case occur when you enter the apartment at its front door. It's a space to the right or the left, up against the party wall, where the corridor is. So typically, it's a seven-by-eight or seven-by-10 space without a window, wide opening into it, where someone might put a desk, or have a little computer nook, or use it for storage. It's inappropriate as a bedroom, but it's a very valuable space to someone who's looking for another, another opportunity for them to set up a place, as I said, for, typically for a desk. So this is a, from our perspective, a very specific request relative to the design of the buildings that we're advancing, and so we were asked the question, is there ever a situation in which you would have both a flex space and a study? And the answer is no. So we have, in some situations, a study that in general meets the definition that exists right now, although we've asked for a very modest change in the size of the opening from six feet to five feet. And again, this is a design-specific request, and of course, when we come before the board with the plans, we'll roll everything out, and you'll see everything in great detail. And the flex space, then, if we have a flex space, we don't have a study. If we have a study, we don't have a flex space.
The next change, as I mentioned earlier briefly, was the requirement that there be 10 percent affordable units built within each of the residential areas of the district. That was not a requirement before, and the lengthy inclusion in here meets the SHI guidelines, so it's sure that it will be able to count towards the town's subsidized housing inventory to help you not lose ground as far as your 10 percent is concerned. So that's the affordable housing piece that's in here. The next clarification is that the, there was originally a golf course that was proposed, and now there is not. And perhaps Mr. Gainer can address that.
Yeah, that one's fairly simple. In 2000, they were building golf courses everywhere, and we thought that it would be kind of neat to put a small municipal course, nine-hole course, and either deed it over to the town, or we, it was never really resolved just exactly how it would have, it would be deeded, but it wouldn't, it would probably become a public municipal. Things have changed significantly since then. They're closing golf courses versus building them. It's not viable to any developer, and therefore, we're not going to build it, but we did it. There was a provision put into the covenant, which stated that in the event that the golf course is not built, that the developer has to lose 40 units of the housing combined on lots one and two. Originally, it was 190 units of housing between the apartments and the townhomes, and it's been reduced to 650 units of housing. That's the reason for that. Any questions?
Okay, okay, please stop. Thanks, Bob. The next change is, it's not really a change, it's clarification, because the next provision in the covenant actually included language about the golf course, and we kept the language in and restated it about the requirement to have a buffer in what they call Area F. And so when you go back and review all of this, there are plans that go with this, and you'll see the Area F, it protects a residential area from the rest of the district. The next change is the size of the building footprints, and there is a change on that because there was a requirement that each building could not be greater than 18,000 square feet, and now the change is that in fact, the average not be bigger than 18,000 square feet, and perhaps Mr. Geisinger can address that.
Yeah, as I understand it, this was somewhat of a shrink-wrapped provision that related to the original footprints of the JPI buildings. We have reduced the number of buildings, so that there are now, in our plan, 398 apartments, there are nine buildings, and one of, and that allows us, of course, to have more open space, more green space, and, and reduce the footprint of the overall development. To make that work, two of the buildings, two of the nine buildings have a slightly larger footprint. They essentially add an apartment on either side of the center line. So the remaining buildings are more in the 16,000-square-foot range. The look of the buildings remains the same, and that was the reason for this request. So on average, the buildings will be less than 18,000. There'll be two buildings that are, have an extra apartment on either side of the central entrance. Otherwise, everything remains the same.
The next change, as indicated in here, has to do with what can be counted as open space and what can't be counted as open space, and again, that was a rewrite after the omission of the golf course, so that's what that's relevant to. And then the next change has to do with having Mr. Gainer, as the property owner, have a timeline within which he has to come in with a plan, or at least a concept, for the next sections of the RTD, so that the Planning Board sees that there's some work being done on this, and it's moving along. So that's the next section that was added to it. Paragraph eight changes Section 10 regarding the requirement that the property owner deed to the town by gift a parcel of land necessary for, or for the town to build a municipal building, a public safety building, or otherwise, and that's a requirement that's in there, and there's been a location for that in the district, and the developer has agreed to gift the town this about four-and-a-half to five-acre parcel of land for a municipal building. And I think, Mr. Moki, you want to do something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to read in the 420 continuation of 466 Chestnut Street. That continuation will take place after the RTD discussion concludes. So comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know. Tony, did you want to say anything about the municipal building, or the gift of the land? Okay. And then sec, the omission of Section 11, 18, and 22 were cleanups that were, because of the passage of time, were no longer necessary in the covenant. One had to do with, I don't have the underlying covenant in front of me, but one had to do with the, the purchase of a van for the senior center, which is no longer necessary. And there were a couple of other items like that that were in the covenant that actually were, by the passage of time, no longer necessary, so those were omitted. I think that when Mr. Skiavi gave the Planning Board these packages, he also provided the original covenant to you, so you actually will be able to see and compare both of the documents. And as always, I, you can ask Matt questions, or you can send me questions, if you have any between now and then, regarding the covenant itself and its impacts, or anything of that nature, if you'd like.
So if I could just comment just briefly on, just, since Lisa didn't have the covenant in front, on number 11, if you see that in there, was a requirement payable to the town $1,000 per unit for public safety. That has actually been moved over and is existing in the Campanelli-Thorn dyke agreement. So the town will be receiving $398,000 from Campanelli-Thorn dyke, based on that paragraph for public safety use for the town. Paragraph 18 just had to do with a grant, as Attorney Mead mentioned, for the minibus that's no longer required, and, and then number 22 was related to Area E, which is again, no longer, no longer required. So those were the only three omissions from the original covenant.
So the, so the objective here, ultimately, we're looking at a vote a week from this evening, and so this is an opportunity for the Planning Board to understand the changes in the covenant, understand what will be deliberated upon and voted upon, so that they're ready next Thursday?
Correct. That's what we'd like. Right now, all five Selectmen have affirmed that they're available next Thursday night for a 7:00 joint meeting with the Planning Board, if we have a sufficient number of Planning Board members. So, you know, timing what it is, you know, all these things are necessary to be able to have Campanelli-Thorn dyke prepare to submit their site plan modification, application to the town. So this is the opportunity to, an opportunity to review the changes and to ask questions and be comfortable with, with that, or if we need to do any additional research for the Planning Board on any of these items, we certainly would, would do that between now and then, if it's necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Any questions?
How many votes do you need next Thursday?
It's a supermajority of both boards.
At least four, then.
Well, yeah, no, that's a, supermajority would be seven of 10.
Oh, it's combined?
Yes, combined.
Oh, interesting, okay. Got it. That is, I don't think we've ever seen that before.
It, that's actually a requirement in the covenant, very clearly laid out in the covenant.
Can, can each of you make it next Thursday?
What time was it?
7:00?
I'll try.
I'm on baby watch, but I should be able to make it.
I was the first one to respond with the dates, by the way. Yeah, you were, you were.
I can make it.
And I couldn't do next week. Let me see, what time are you doing? What time's it open, 7? 7:00 on Thursday. Well, they're going to jump right into it? Preston can make it, so if you can't make it, we'll have four. You can?
I'm going to try.
So you got 50/50 right here. If you do it right at 7, then I can just be late for the other thing.
(inaudible).
Same thing? All right. So if it's right at 7, we can jump right into it? 7 will jump right into it. Do you want me to, so tonight you're looking for thoughts, reactions in general that we're looking for tonight? Do you want to go on here? Anybody else want to? I don't want to hog.
That's all we need.
Want to go? Want to go?
Sure.
All right. I like this, by the way. It's the first time I've seen like a nice layout of mitigations, benefit type, Masworks, owner-developer combined, due date, that kind of thing. I really like that, so I appreciate that. I don't know who did that, but this is your work, right? The updated covenant as a whole, just kind of run through a few things to get my gut reaction area by area. I was studying this, I think, maybe a week or change ago, and I had to just get reoriented. The flex space, the shift to two beds, I would agree with them 100 percent. The market has shifted towards two beds versus one bed. Personally, I know there's this bias or disdain towards more than two beds. A lot of people, I mean, I get it, they assume it's going to be a lot of kids and overflow the schools, and I think obviously, from the Planning Department, Planning Board, Planning Department, we have to consider those things. My personal bias is, why are we so discriminatory against families? We should be welcoming families into the town. But I understand the way that the covenant is trying to achieve that is through either the leases or the deeds, and I would maybe, it'd be nice to hear Town Council's opinion on the more effective way to do that, but by the way this is worded, I guess it's leaving it to determination. It's going to be tough once it goes into leases, and that may push a shift, some pressure onto the actual owner, or whoever's going to be managing this afterwards, but I guess I can throw that out there quickly. Is this, is it pretty common, or do you find one is more effective than the other, or is this kind of saying both?
Well, I, I'm not sure that I understand the question.
So in Section 1, we talk about, there's one little section here that we're modifying, it says, "All leases and/or deeds shall specify the number of bedrooms associated with such unit, and shall specify that any flex space or study shall not be permitted to be used for bedroom purposes." So obviously, yeah.
So it's going to be, it's actually going to be, it'll be, A, it's a part of the special permit, right? It's going to be a part of the site plan review. One of the things that you'll see in the development agreement, so the same language in the development agreement that the Board of Selectmen are signing, also contain the limitation on bedrooms. And in those development agreements, Campanelli-Thorn dyke have already agreed that a condition in the site plan approval modification will include the development agreement. So it will be enforced through a zoning process, through the development agreement. In addition, it'll be in the leases, so all the leases will say how the space can be used, and it's on the covenant. So those are the, those are kind of the layers of how it will be enforced.
Okay. And I'm just putting that out there for the public, as in general, I've kind of stated that I think we should be welcoming families to town, but it is something people ask. The, I like the proportional releases of affordability, so people, and they've stated that in this covenant, and it's restated, whereas they can't just put in 40 market unit, market rate units, and then, hey, we're going to give you one affordable, it is proportionate too, so they've got, they've been numbered, you've got to get up to 10, you've got to at least do one affordable. So I'm glad we kept that in there. The golf course thing, I think probably would have tanked, so I see why you took it. Halston's got to deal with this right now, even though I like playing there, I don't think it would work in this location, so that's, again, my opinion. There's not really enough space. And a couple other things towards the end. The footprint piece, as far as that goes, I think, I think, I don't even know how it made the original covenant, I'm assuming people don't like to see large buildings, but there's a lot of efficiencies to large buildings. As you guys have probably heard, there's less impervious-type surface, roofs, pavement, that kind of thing. It does give them better opportunity to open up for green space, so I tend to mentally be, is, obviously you have more massing towards one building, but it's not as though they went higher, so therefore, I think this is probably a smart thing for the town overall, to have a slightly larger building. In Section 8, the piece of property, so the wording of this is interesting, because I, I would prefer, and obviously this may be the way it's worded, but I would prefer that the town get to decide afterwards, should we choose to develop on this piece of land or sell it, if we choose that there's a better piece of property, more ideal for the fire and police. And the way you worded it when you were talking was "or otherwise," in which I actually like, and that, but it says here, "The grantor shall convey as a gift to the grantee a parcel of four-and-a-half to five acres, which is suitable for the town to construct a combined fire and police public safety facility, or other municipal facility, as the town determines it in its sole discretion." So it's kind of a, it's allowing us to construct something, but it isn't allowing us the freedom as a town to sell it, if we'd have a better piece of property, so.
Well, it says other municipal purposes, not facility. Maybe, I don't know, maybe you have a draft that, before that was changed.
It just says, or is the town, or is the town determined? So I'm just thinking a little bit down the road. I wouldn't want to be in a situation where we're now fighting with a few residents that don't want us to sell it. I'd rather give flexibility to the town to decide, town management to decide, if we do have a better location, and it's in a more ideal centralized location, which obviously this is a pretty good location. But it would be nice to be able to turn that, and then obviously build somewhere else and do nothing with this, should the town choose. So just, just curious, and it doesn't sound like the developer even cares. So just a thought in general, I saw the piece of property, too, and how you have the fire department potentially positioned right on, MBTA rode the police a little further back, so you might determine, eh, it's not ideal to have the police further back, and I know we're gonna do something weird with the wetland to get back there, and they're giving additional acreage beyond that, if we have to deal with wetlands, which makes total sense, but.
So part of my question, I actually don't know where it's located, the five acres and.
Yeah, so it's about twelve hundred feet in on the MBT access road, and the picture you have was just an early design thing. The desire of the town is to build a combined facility. And so I think the wording in there is suitable for the town to actually build a combined fire, police, public safety facility, or other municipal purpose. If we decide not to build a public safety facility there, it could be left as just open space, could put a park there. I mean, you know, I guess there's a, you know, a number of things that the town could do to it, I say short of selling it, but, so it wouldn't necessarily have to construct a building, and we would be able to use it for other purposes. But the design of, at least for public safety, was to have enough property available in order to build a combined facility. So that's why you'll see some language in there related to wetlands. There are some wetlands around there, and should, through the, you know, conservation commission process, you know, the town be allowed to, to fill some wetlands and replicate those that Mr. Gainer's agreed to give us additional property, property necessary for replication of wetlands, again, you know, notwithstanding any, you know, decision on the, from the conservation commission on that. So we've tried to provide a number of different ways for us to be, to have flexible use of that, of that property, and not, you know, pigeonhole for just one, you know, one use, short of sale.
Well, why wouldn't you want to be able to sell it?
Well, I mean, I think we really wanted to use it for something, so I think during the negotiation process, we really didn't, you know, have that discussion in depth about, you know, whether the town could eventually sell it or not. I suppose we could talk to Mr. Gainer about that, but it didn't actually come up in our discussions.
Okay. I'm just, if this is the time period where you're just about to go to, or selectmen, and get this locked in, now, I'd rather, I'd rather give the town max flexibility, otherwise we could legitimately be looking at a nonsense, I'm not gonna say useless, but a dead piece of property that has the potential to be five hundred thousand dollars, two million dollars, just, you know, to the town, and of course, we'll use it for good purposes, so.
Right.
Trying to help you.
Yeah, thanks.
So, I don't know, it's up to you guys, I guess you're gonna have to draft something if they decide to go in that direction.
Yeah, well, Tony will talk to the board.
So, okay, and that was pretty much it for me.
Nasa, did you have any comments?
I'm good for now.
So we talked about the location of the land, so it's been determined you said twelve hundred feet in on the right?
Approximately.
Approximately right. And then for the affordable units, would they be split twenty-six units to two bedroom and fourteen to one bedroom? Or is, I saw something, you mentioned three bedrooms for the affordable units, is that something in the SHI bylaw?
No, there's no three, there's no three bedrooms at all.
So on the bottom of. Yeah, I didn't know, the bottom of this page here with the chart.
Yeah, I see what you're talking about, Mike.
Yeah, the three, three-bedroom units shall be developed simultaneously and continuously with prorata development of the one and two-bedroom units.
We're, uh.
Uh, next page.
Oh.
I wonder if we're looking at something else.
Maybe it's one more page in. I don't see a little chart at the top of your page, so. Yep, right there.
Oh, look at that. No, this needs to be changed, there are no three-bedroom units.
No.
There's been a million pairs of eyes on that, and nobody's got that mic, so that's good. There, I, I will revise that, there are no three-bedroom units.
Okay. And so will the split, I assume it's forty units, all right, you gotta round up, and.
Yeah, everything has to be proportional.
Right.
So it'll be proportional to what you're building, so twenty-six, fourteen, I think, if that's the new split, or something like that?
It's proportional, and it's prorated as we, you know, move through the project.
Okay. Does that, that applies to all six hundred and ninety units in the development, or six hundred and fifty now, I should say?
Six hundred and fifty, ten percent applies to it all.
So, and that just keeps us on, on par, or it doesn't certainly?
It's actually the whole of the RTD.
Right. And again, this language is also repeated, as you see in the drafts that you have, in both development agreements.
As far as, you, you mentioned the mitigating funds have moved to Campanelli and Thorn dyke.
Right.
What, what, that was a thousand dollars per unit?
Right.
For all six hundred and fifty units as well?
No, the three hundred.
Just for phase one?
Right.
And that was for services rendered, like, that are gonna be impacted by the town, I assume? Is that what that?
It's for public safety, so the, the specific uses of public safety is from the number of things that have to be used, with personnel, et cetera.
Let me answer that, I can add some context to that. It was specifically related to the fact that the town did not have a fire truck, a hook and ladder truck, that would, that would service four-story buildings. And because these would be four-storings on, on the low side, they put that in to purchase a hook and ladder truck. And that was the, that was the original purpose of the thing, yeah.
Right, so that was the.
So it applies really to lot one, because there will no, not be any other buildings, that'll be four-story. Only lot one.
Do we have that truck now?
Huh?
Do we have a truck now that can do that?
Yeah, they did.
Do we have a, do we have a fireman that can use the truck?
I don't know.
Tony, what else, what else do we need?
So, I know you have this draft, we're not gonna go through it, but in the development agreement with Campanelli and Thorn dyke, it's paragraph eight, and it talks about the thousand dollar per unit mitigation for public safety.
Yeah, for public safety. Also, in the original agreement, there was, and, and I, I did catch a little bit of the board of selectmen meeting, but not all of it, but I know there was some discussion around trails, right? And there's something in here that talks about future development of a bike and walking path and connections to High Street. I saw it in the, in the original covenant.
So that has not changed in the covenant, so that's why you don't see it in the amendment?
Yep.
That hasn't changed, but then in the, we made a revision in the development agreement regarding the access to High Street for trails.
And I watched, while you were trying to find that, I did watch a little bit of that discussion, and I, I thought it was, just like it's a, a little unclear as to what kind of trails will be left, or what kind of access, and the ownership of it, and, and maybe it was purposely left that way, but I just, I, I didn't really understand it. And then when I, I also received something from Joel today, kind of outlining some of the standards around trail building, and, and keeping it up to the same standards as the rest of the Greenway. So I just wanted to, does the language need to be in there that says it'll be maintained to the same standard as the rest of the Greenway? Right, is that essentially covered, or is it kind of up to the landowner to maintain the trail as they see fit?
So in the development agreement with the, with the landowner, in paragraph five, and you have that document, it talks about the future development plan to be in conformity with the zoning provisions of the RTD. It shall depict bike and walking paths, connections to the downtown facilities, connections with the upper Charles Rail Trail Committee work. And that talks about subsequent site planning approval with the planning board. There's a couple of other places that we have the trail. All public access bike and walking paths, which are a part of the parcels being developed, shall complete prior, be complete prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy for any structure, a part of those parcels. So there's a deadline to enforce when the bike and walking paths have to be complete. And you, as the planning board, of course, are gonna be approving the site plans, right? So they have to come in in conformance with this, and they have to show where the bike and walking paths are throughout the, throughout the district as it gets developed.
That, would that be the time to, I guess, say how wide or the maintenance schedule of a trail?
Yeah, that, yes, that's exactly right. It would be part of your site plan approval, and that would be proposed by the applicant, or the developer, as the case may be. But there are a couple of places within the development agreement that deal with the trails.
And they'll certainly remain open to the public, and there's nothing.
Right, so Mr. Moki, it, Mr. Skjavi is correct, this is the change, this is the discussion you heard from the board of selectmen meeting. The declarant agrees that no access or egress shall be permitted to High Street and Lorraine Drive, except for emergency access or egress. And just so you know, that's taken, that is something in the original covenant that's not changing, as required by the town, notwithstanding connections to biking and or walking trails, determined by the town to be in the best interest, and is contemplated under section five of the agreement, which is what I just read to you. The developer agrees that fifty feet of a portion of the RTD abutting residential properties in Frontage and High and Baldwin Circle shall remain undisturbed, or shall be landscaped in accordance with the plan approved by the planning board originally. Again, that protection is also in the covenant.
So I think that's it. The other, I guess, well, one more question would be in regards to the traffic, traffic pattern in and out of the rail transit district. And I know, I've heard other people mention it as well, you know, someday we'd have to, to connect either Pleasant or High Street somewhere. Is any of that covered in the covenant, or the agreement, or would it just be excluded from phase one, and be added to future phases? I guess I'm.
So I, I'm not gonna address the connections exactly, but when the original site plan was approved, there was a traffic study done by VHB, I think? Is that who the traffic study did?
Viness, like the predecessor.
Yeah, the predecessor to VHB. And some of those improvements were implemented, and some weren't. And the ones that weren't are required to be implemented by Campanelli-Thorn dyke as part of their development agreement. And in addition, they will be having a traffic report for you. Their agreement also requires them to do a study of the Olive Franklin, one other street. And provide money to do the study for the, that intersection that has proven to be somewhat of a problem. So you will be seeing all that traffic work. I don't know about the later connections, but of course, as each part of the development comes in, you have control over that site plan review, and part of that site plan review is traffic. So you'll be able to see all of that.
Yeah, my, my concern is if the site plan reviews will come in one at a time, if, if we don't understand the layout of the property prior, we may miss our opportunity to appropriately connect to another corridor.
Right, and that is why we ask as part of the developers, the owners' development agreement, that he present an overall plan to the board within a certain period of time, kind of a concept. I had mentioned that earlier. I'm just trying to find where that is.
Lisa, can I, can I address that, because I, I understand the question, and the reason for the question. We looked at connecting from the MBTA parking lot through, there's an access there, that's an emergency access to the bridge, just prior to the bridge, to get out to Pleasant Street, and then to Oak Street, et cetera, rather than going all the way around and through downtown. That was, we, we gave up that because we had a lot of opposition from the people on High Street, who were concerned that people would use that to go out onto High Street, and then go out to High Street to the further down one thirty-five. So there's, there's reasons for some of this, and even though we're trying to make some of these changes, we, we can't, we have to be sensitive to the fact that this, that this covenant was put in place, actually, as part of the bylaw, not, not really after it, I mean, before it. The bylaw was presented, and then the covenant was put in place to ensure people that certain things in the bylaw would be, would be complied with by the developer, the future developers of the site. So we made, so, so that was, was a provision that was put in there to appease the people on High Street, as was the buffer that Lisa talked about along Apple Ridge. That was a negotiation with them to give a untouched buffer that would separate them from any housing, and that we wouldn't go out onto Lorraine Drive, nor would we go out onto Baldwin Circle. So those, those have, you know, historical context reasons for being there. Personally, it's not, it's not a problem for, for me, as, as owner of the entire site. I have no problem whatsoever, I think it would be good. Tony and I talked somewhat about it, and there could be a, a, you know, provision that you can't make a left turn there, and can only go right and over the bridge, and out to Pleasant Street, which I think would be a good thing. So, you know, but clearly, if we're gonna have traffic going out, and then going the other way, going south on High Street, that could or could not be problematic. Not, not as far as I'm concerned, but people might have a problem with that. So if that helps you at all, that's where that came from.
But to your long-range planning issue, so it is in the covenant that you will be approving in paragraph seven, that it's, that it will be amended to say that within six months of the execution of this amendment, the grantor shall commence and diligently pursue the planning of the remainder of the RTD. Within one year, the grantor shall provide the planning board a plan, which will set forth a concept of the remaining layout and uses in the RTD, including timing for implementation of same, subject to limitations of the covenant in this amendment. So it does put a requirement, he show you a law, an overall concept plan, which will be your time to start to consider that.
So, so not, not being a lawyer, the word "subject to limitations" to the covenant make me think we should maybe identify a spot that could potentially be the connection in the covenant now, right? Before we see that plan, should we?
No, the limitations of the covenant would be, so for example, to what Mr. Gainer just said, you, you couldn't, you couldn't use, the covenant says you can't use, you can't have an excess out, an exit out of High Street into Baldwin Circle, you can't do that. So that means that when you're doing your planning work, you can't say to him, you have to go that way, because the covenant doesn't allow it. So that's, subject to those limitations. So if there's anything else that aren't limited in the covenant, you can absolutely consider.
Okay, I, so I understand that, so I'm, I guess my question is, are we considering other exits than the circle or at High Street, right? Is there other spots that we can identify on the front end that may?
There's not a plan put forward, right?
There's not a plan put forward, there's a piece of land there.
Right, there's no, there's no overall plan.
I'm just not comfortable that we're gonna end up with something that's suitable, if we don't address it.
So I, I think one thing that's important, so the covenant can be changed as many times as the board of selectmen and the planning board wish to do so. So I think what Attorney Mead's trying to get at is, when Mr. Gainer provides the plan, and there's a similar requirement to come in, I think, quarterly to the board of selectmen, to develop this, this future development plan. And I think there's probably interest in, you know, another exit of the RTD out into the, you know, Pleasant Street area. And so as that moves forward, and a plan gets put forward to potentially do that, if it looks like that is a viable thing for the town, and, and the community decides that's a good idea, the, the planning board, the selectmen certainly can go back and amend the covenant again to adjust those current limitations that are in there, so that, you know, there is never an opportunity lost, so you can go back as many times as is deemed fit for the town to go back and adjust the covenant. It's just, in this particular situation on phase one, it wasn't a requirement, and those limitations are there. But I think in the future, for the rest of the RTD, I think those discussions are very appropriate. But we also need to take into, you know, consideration the larger community in that discussion, and how that may take shape as, you know, the, the landowner puts forth future plans for the, the remainder of the, of the rail transit district, so.
Okay, thank you. And I, and I agree, it's part of a larger discussion, I just didn't know if we needed protection in there, but if we can revisit it after, then that's certainly an acceptable answer. I just, I mean, the landscape of one thirty-five has changed, we all know that, there's, there's different traffic patterns than fifteen years ago, and.
So the, the landowner, the town, and the board, the board of selectmen, and the planning board can all agree to change the covenant at any time?
Those are my questions. Anything else from any of the members of the planning board at this time? Trails? Twelve for me now, do you got anything else?
Yep.
So we'll schedule for next Thursday?
So we're gonna schedule for next Thursday, it's, so BOs is set up for seven o'clock, right? All right, so then we'll aim for Thursday at seven. If we start on the dot, I think we can do it. Can we? Would, would, would it help if we started at six-thirty?
To me, it would, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah? Yeah? Can you make it at 6:30?
I should be able to.
That'd be, yep.
6:30 works. I do, I do have a question, I think, just for Tony before we leave or for the applicant, I guess, and it's, it's around discussion around the rail transit district. Obviously, there's a lot of interest from the community. I didn't know if we had any forums planned to kind of outline, you know, that it's what it is or if, you know, I think it'd be a good idea to get in front of people again and give them a chance to, to hear more about it and learn more about it because it's certainly, you know, the talk of the town right now.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about it, I mean, we haven't put anything particular together.
I think it would probably go a long way, letting people understand what, what's back on the table and what's going on with the whole parcel and as a whole. Thank you, guys. All right, do I have to read the time again? Ready to see the applicants here for 466 Chestnut. We're going to continue the public hearing on the senior residential community and special permit. Sorry for keeping you guys a little bit longer than anticipated. Are they pictures that need to probably be on the camera? Maybe want to ask the cameraman.
Probably over there.
Where, where should they set them up?
Under the TV, yeah. Or right on top of that, put a question on top of that table.
So the, the peer reviewer, PSC, recently provided the Planning Board and the applicant with the first iteration to the peer review, which was applied late last week. We have our one-week policy, but the applicant has been very ambitious and they, and they'd like to move forward and dig into a little bit, little bit of it tonight. They'd like to hit on some of the highlights and review it with you guys. So we'll open it up to the applicant.
Before that, John, you missed the last meeting, so could you just state whether or not you've seen the tape and signed the affidavit?
I have, I have watched the tape, made a bunch of notes, and I have filled out an affidavit and got it over to Nat.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, fellow citizens of the Town of Ashland. For the record, my name is Jerry Effron, I represent Pickwick Development Corporation, doing business as the Green Company. We're the applicant for a SRC special permit. I wanted tonight to bring you up to date on events since the last meeting and go over a few other things. Our decision to come before you after seeing only the peer review report on Friday has nothing to do with being ambitious or impatient. It has everything to do with trying to get some input from the board to guide us together through this process. Since the last meeting, I wanted to go over briefly some events. I then want to discuss a few sections myself of the peer review report, and then I will turn it over to Mr. Caligaris, and we have our engineer here for questions as well. I then want to discuss some issues relative to where we see going from here, open items, scheduling and the like. We did have a meeting with the Conservation Commission since we last convened. That meeting revealed no substantive issues that will require the applicant to relocate any of the ways or the infrastructure laid out on the site plan, which is good, which means that we can go forward to substantively discuss all of the items and issues that result from our play, our layout, our location of units and everything else without concern that there's going to be any drastic need to move any roads, homes, drainage facilities. We had received, according to the records of the town, only one additional comment, piece of material since our last filing. That was a, a letter from a neighbor that deals with some issues relating to the entranceway on Chestnut Street. Mr. Caligaris will respond and relate to those. We determined during the course of some technical review in responding to the peer review report that through inadvertence, we had filed in our scenic road permit, which is part of this consolidated public hearing, only to get permission for the minimal alterations on Elliott Street. We inadvertently omitted to deal with the minimal alterations on Chestnut Street. As a result, we need to file that application and we need to join it with this hearing. Preparatory to filing that application, the guts of which are rather simple, we need unfortunately to do some survey work out in the field. It'll take about seven to 10 days to complete that. Based on the notice period, what would mean that we need to get that in and have it published before we reconvene. And we will be looking for scheduling for the next meeting so that we will be able to have notice given that that hearing can take place and then be combined with the remainder of this hearing so that the board can have all the information it needs to make the judgments that will be asked to be made at the end of the proceeding. As Nat indicated, we did get the peer review report. We were afforded an immediate meeting, which we very much appreciated with Nat and Town Council, which occurred on Tuesday. That was an incredibly productive meeting. We literally went through each line item one by one, discussed the impact, and came away with an overall feeling that there were no insurmountables that were presented by the peer review report. That is, that is often the case. The report correctly identified some omissions which will be able to be cured effectively, raised some issues which were able to be discussed and which can be responded to effectively, and probably set forth the need to augment the original waiver list, to particularize some items which, for which there will most likely not be a lot of dispute, but which might properly deal with waivers. With respect to the peer review, they were putting aside the order, and I guess we thought the peer review was written pretty well, flowed pretty easily, and was actually a very easy-to-read document, which we think is helpful to the process. It really identified a couple of major areas, the first being the overall compliance with the SRC bylaw and the requirements for open space and yield, which I'll speak about. Then, then also some things with respect to the effect of some of the product being in the CO district and also with, and what, what role the subdivision rules and regulations will have. I'm going to speak about those three things in general, and then Mr. Caligaris will speak to some additional specifics, as well as discussing the matter of that letter that I spoke about. Initially, the peer, the peer review report in the beginning, the first really, you know, one to eight items in part, talked about the overall use of the project, determined, of course, that it was proper for an SRC. Since the gentleman who wrote it was not here at town meeting, he did not know that the town meeting had approved the use of the SRC, which takes care of an item that he specified as to whether or not such use was permitted in the CO district. He then went through some various questions as to the applicability of certain items in the CO district, which I believe there'll be a concurrence of judgment, do not apply because we are, this product does not involve a commercial development within the CO district, it involves a senior residential community, a residential use. So to, to a certain extent, some of the things he called out, like a site alteration special permit and a particular setback requirement with respect to buffering and some reasons for connecting, they do not apply to this particular project, the residential SRC project. Of great importance, the, he reviewed the various layout with respect to the configuration of the property and looked at the various dimensional requirements set forth in the SRC district. And in doing so, he used those to make a determination of what methodology should be used to deal with the appropriate yield, the maximum number of units that could be put on the property. The two overriding policies in the SRC district, at least in my judgment, are the yield and also to preserve the open space in a significant way. And he found that, according to the methodology, that there could be a maximum of 126 SRC units on the parcel, giving, giving full account to the dimensional requirements, the methodology, the requirement of open space, and the requirement to set aside wetland. And as you all know, we're only proposing 93 units, we're well within the permitted amount of units, which is a, a very good thing. The last item I wanted to talk about a little bit is the subdivision rules and regulations. The history of the three SRC permits that have been given makes it clear that the SRC, that the subdivision rules and regulations apply in certain areas, particularly in the construction end in certain cases, but don't apply in others. These, of course, are private roadways, private sidewalks, private infrastructure, no town maintenance of anything. So to the extent certain specifications are written for subdivisions and will include projects which are going to be taken over by the public, those regulations do not apply. And it's the same thing for certain of the dimensional requirements. So in discussing the matter with the planner and Town Council, we're going to respond to the peer review, to the board rather, in a manner that will make clear that to the extent any overall waiver is required, just simply because of the disconnect between the two areas, we'd be looking for one, but in particular, for those items which traditionally have been the subject of waivers and a traditional subdivision review, where necessary, we will make a specified waiver list. We submitted, I believe, five at the time. That, that will probably grow, but it will not be growing by a significantly large number. With respect to the process, we believe we're going to be able to get this back to the planner within a week to 10 days. It'll be augmented with some plan revisions, some additional supplemental sheets for certain areas, including the clubhouse, which you're going to hear something about tonight. And you'll, you'll also be getting some revisions to certain items of the text. These should be able to go back to the peer reviewer for his review and response in an efficient manner and in a timely manner. And it is our hope that we can receive tonight perhaps any input that the board may have, although we know that you also have had to review this in a very, very expedited way, and you're certainly not foreclosed from that review at all, ever, until the close of the hearing in this case. But we hope to take whatever guidance and put it into our responses so that we can get these things back and the town can then receive additional advice and consultation from its technical consultant so that when we reconvene, we'll have made hopefully whatever modifications are necessary and we'll be ready for some judgments to be made. So with that, with your permission, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Caligaris to respond to that matter about the entranceways and also to discuss some peer review items. And of course, we're all available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. So as Jerry mentioned, what we thought would be helpful, what I'd like to do is to go over the, the letter that we received, that the board received. It is consistent, I think, with the, the issue that I identified at the last meeting, which had been identified to us at one of our neighborhood meetings before we filed. And that has to do with the concern of the primary entry being in the location of the existing entry onto the property off of Chestnut Street, which is right in this area over here. What I had told you at the last meeting was that when we had heard of that issue, we, we tried to be, in this whole process, there are so many, there are things we've tried to be as responsive as we can, and there are certain things that we can, certain things that we couldn't. But what, what we did there is we tried to slide that entry further to the north, which is vertical up on the plan, in order to provide more space to the south. The gentleman who wrote it, I believe, lives in this house right here, and it provides us more space to landscape to the right of our entry, which will allow us to essentially preserve the area from the, you can see a stone wall out there at the entry to his side of it, which, which is very, very helpful. And so that entry, we, from day one, we always thought that that entry was logical because that's been the entry to the property forever. In terms of the use, as identified on the traffic report or the traffic report from the, from the VHB engineer, the use that an SRC community has is much less on a per-home basis than, say, single-family homes. In fact, the easiest way I think about it is that the 93 SRC homes here produce the same traffic as the 36 or so single-family homes that one could get on a traditional subdivision on that property. The additional thing is that the characteristics are such that they're not quite as much in and out at the same time as single-family homes, which is, which is helpful for the dispersion of, of traffic, you know, across the, the length of the day. The, in terms of the safety aspect, that's one of the things that was addressed by the engineer in, in the traffic report, and they found that the site distances in both directions and things were fine. They didn't feel that the amount of volume that we're adding really puts any kind of stress on that road. And they did, you know, they did traffic counts, they did current traffic counts, and they followed the standards that are typical with, with those kinds of reports. In terms of some of the items identified in the letter that deal with, you know, speed on the road and sort of what's happening across the street, it's hard for us to, to really deal with any of that. I will tell you that, you know, it's, there's always a quick reaction in terms of thinking about the numbers of homes, but it really, you just have to see some of the communities, they don't really produce a lot of traffic, it just doesn't seem like it. And I know Sudbury, on one of the communities we did about 12 years ago, they had done something for another community that was applied, and they were, it was underneath the traffic counts that we had given when they actually went and did their studies. So, so we, we're very comfortable with, with the location of the drive, with the safety aspects of it, and with the fact that it seems to be more logical for it to be there where it has always been. And I guess the only other thing that I would add is certainly while that property was being used for the town hall, I can assure you the traffic was far in excess of anything that we're producing in terms of traffic in and out with, whether it's employees, people visiting, all that kind of stuff. Now, that goes back a few years, and I'm just sort of trying to, trying to keep... Now, that goes back a few years, and I'm just sort of trying to, trying to keep in perspective the fact that it is commercially zoned, and yes, it has been vacant, but that's the kind of dynamic you get if there was something commercial there. So I'm not sure what else I can add to that. Yeah, I'm not really sure what else I can add to that. If that's, if you want, I can start to move through the, some of the items we're hoping to get input on from the, the peer review.
I'd like to ask that.
Sure. It's up to you.
Mr. Muntz.
Certainly, we'll take some public discussion now, if you have a certain comment to the traffic.
I think it's pretty simple. My name's Tom Young, and I live at 470 Chestnut. I'm the one who sent that email. There's a possibility of 186 cars being in that development, okay? Which isn't a big deal, but in the morning, these people have to work, okay? I don't care if it's a 55 or older, they're $500,000 homes, and they have to work, okay? That being said, where the entrance is, you got a left and right. There's no way you can't put that entrance onto Elliot Street without a problem. That gives you five choices, left and right. You go right, you go left and right on Chestnut, you go right, you go left and right on Prospect, or continue straight onto Elliot. I have four pictures here, I don't know if you have them. I sent them before. I really can't hold them up and show them, but I'd like to give them to you.
Tell me to hold them up over there? That'd be helpful for you?
Yeah, no, no, it's, I really know what they are, so let me explain. Okay, if you look at this, there's our house, here's the address, okay? I really need you guys to see this, because I don't want you to have these. It's only 60 feet away, okay? This entrance shouldn't even be on Chestnut Street. I'm a lifer here in town. Do you know how many fatalities we've had on this road? Do you know how many bad accidents we've had on this road? Now we have the soccer field, we have the bocce field, there's a lot of cars right there at one time. When I first moved into this house 13 years ago, we had three feet of dirt right there in front of the house. Now there's practically 20 feet of dirt in front of that house, because everybody that misses Elliot Street turns around right there, and it's created a turnaround right there, which again, is right near the entrance of this project. I know it may be financially, we're taking away from homes or whatever, by creating a, an entrance exit onto Elliot Street, but it's for the safety, you know, it really is. And you guys, I'm asking you, I'm not asking to stop progress, I'm asking to guide it, because it really isn't a good idea for Chestnut Street to have an entrance with a possibility of 186 cars. So I just want you to think about it. Again, it's not that hard to change the road out to Elliot. It really isn't. Guys, keep this, think about it. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I think, just continue finishing, and then we'll, we'll take any more public discussion at the end.
Okay. All right. Okay, so in, some of the items that we'll talk about relate to, I know we haven't submitted it, but just giving you an idea of where we're going with some things. So I think, since I have this plan up, one of the items that the peer review reviewer identified had to do with the plantings on the perimeter buffer, so there were kind of two issues there. One had to do with stuff that was preserved, and the very simple answer that we'll be giving there is that we have a limit of disturbance line around this entire perimeter. And so essentially, what's happening is everything on the outboard side of that line, that's not disturbed, so it's, it's all saved. Everything on the inboard side has to be recreated. I mean, it's one of the trade-offs one has when we're trying to preserve this much bulk open space. I mean, there are trade-offs we have to make. The only exception that we would make to disturbing something in that, that, that buffer area that's indicated, and all of it is 30 feet or more, it's, it's, it's more than what's required under the bylaw, would be to the extent if you have like a, something that's dangerous, a tree that might be leaning into the developed area, in which case, we will, we will use the landscape architect to indicate that that's a danger, and if we had to deal with it in some way or manner. So that has to do with the, sort of the stuff that's preserved and, and not preserved. In terms of the, the buffer, and I, I sort of understand this, and, and we approached it in a manner where we highlighted on our plans, all the areas where we would go back, we, you know, once the clearing happened, we would see what's there, and we would supplement the understory to kickstart it. Normally, what happens with the understory is once it's exposed to light, everything starts growing to that light, so it starts to, it starts to fill in fairly, fairly well. But typically, what we like to do is to supplement it, recognizing that that puts an ambiguity into the, into the process. What, what I'm going to do, and what we'll resubmit, is we'll come back with some sort of a, a list with, you know, the types of plants and quantities that we'd be thinking about for the different areas. And we will also, I was asked recently when we do that, to somebody said, you do it at the end of the project, and I, no, no way. We do it as soon as we can. So we like to plant spring or fall, and we like to plant it as soon as we can, so it has as much time to sort of get going. And so with each phase, we would be dealing with the, the perimeter buffer in that phase. So if, with phase one, Kurt, could you put up the phase one plan there? So as an example, just stay near there, because I might need some help on something. So as an example, the perimeter buffer that's involved in this area, this, there's really not going to be nothing much needed there, but here and here, we would do all that as part of phase one. And so what I will do on the, on the plan coming back is rather than treat it the way we did, we'll treat it with more an indication of, of plant material and some quantities. So at least you, you know that, that those quantities will be planted there. So that has to do with sort of perimeter buffer, the preservation, and sort of the, the planting type stuff. The second thing on phasing is we, there will be an adjustment to the phasing plan that deals with one of the items the, the peer reviewer raised, and we actually had already dealt with it with the fire department, but we just hadn't reflected on the plans yet. And that has to do with, phase one, everything is fine. When we get to phase two, we end up with a fairly lengthy dead-end road before phase three kicks in. So what we're going to be doing, when, as part of phase two, is we're going to rough cut a gravel road out to this point here. So it'll give the fire department a second way to get in if something happens, and it will also provide a second means of, of access to the site during, during the construction process. So that will be reflected on, somehow, on the next version of the, of the phasing plan. In terms of entry signage, Kurt, can you, let me just, excuse me for a second. The other thing that was pointed out was, in the bylaw, there's, there's supposed to be no through traffic, and I think it, it sort of stems from some problems in prior communities or something. But essentially here, there, there is no through traffic. I mean, you can't get through because there's no way to get through. All that we have here is an emergency egress, it's chained off. So what we were thinking, if, if the board feels that a sign is needed, is that if somebody comes in, what I'm trying to do is avoid sort of signage clutter at the entry. So if somebody comes in, they can make their way, they can loop around. So, you know, they come in, they're just going to end up finding their way out. The only place will be the road that comes down in this area, so we could put a sign here that says not, no through traffic, or dead end, or something, no exit, whatever. And I think that that would meet the, the technical parts of the bylaw. I think in, we already meet it in spirit, because you can't go through, you just can't drive through. So that was what our thought process was. If you guys feel a sign is needed, that's really up to you. We're certainly happy to do it. We think that the logical place would be down, it would be down on this area down here. Kurt, put up the, just flip to the second. So in terms of signage, this is, this is where we're headed at the entry sign. It's, says the lanterns at Warren Woods. You can see the lantern theme playing itself out. This sign is three by three, so it's within the limits provided by the bylaw. And this is, if you go back to the landscaping plan, Kurt, which is the very first one. As you may recall, if you look at the entry sketch here, that sign on both sides of the entry, there's sort of a, a, a column, a stone, a stone wall type column, which dies into the natural stone walls. A stone wall that angles back off the, angles into the entry, and then another column. So that sign would hang off of that, off of that post. Internal to the site is really just a sign at each of the neighborhood entries that basically says, two through 12, Warren Way, which happens to be the, the name we're looking at for this first road here, even on the left. And we've reviewed that with both the building inspector and the fire department, to make sure that they're comfortable with how we've numbered things and how we're treating it, and they, they're very comfortable with it. And then there'll be some signs hanging off a light post at the different street points, points to show street names and that kind of thing. So we'll have, we'll be, be able to show the entry sign as we submit it next. In terms of open space, since our last meeting, there have been two things that I believe have happened, yeah, I know they've happened. So on one level, I believe the conservation commission voted unanimously that if offered the land, the, these two bulk open spaces, well, first of all, we're talking about these two bulk open space parcels here, the field, as well as this area to the, to the, to the east, I guess. And so the, the conservation commission voted to accept it if offered, and the board of selectmen voted unanimously to accept it if offered. So there are details that have to be worked out with all that, in terms of the logistics and the timing and all that, which is fine, we're happy to do it, however. One of the changes, though, that we're going to make on the next set of plans is we're going to break down this open space area. To break it down with sort of the equivalent of an A and R lot around the house, so it'll become open space A1, open space A2, because I believe that there, there will be a way that those parcels could be conveyed at different points in time. I know for sure that, you know, we haven't gotten into the details of it, but I'm sure the town will, will want to make sure that that drain is facing, is all complete, and everything is done before the land gets conveyed. Conversely, the house could happen right away. So the most logical thing that I could think of to accommodate that, and it doesn't, it can go all at one time, doesn't matter to us, would be to just break that open space parcel down into an A and a B. And so you'll, you'll see that. And the A will be effectively equal to what would be essentially an A and R configuration for the, for the house.
Will conform to zoning.
It will conform to zoning, yep. There was a comment about handicap access to open space, and a suggestion that we add a handicap spot in this area here, there's some parking stops there. There's also, it is an exit, there's a ramp down here that allows, it's, it's grassed, but it allows you to get down to, to service the basin. So we, we're happy to do that, and that will provide the sort of technical handicap access to this open space parcel along Chestnut and Elliot. And there's, the plan is to have a field mode path that passes its way through here, and then ultimately connects over to Warren Woods, so it will not only allow access to that, but it will allow a connection to Warren Woods to happen as well. Sidewalks. So, actually, let me deal, let me deal sidewalk, let me deal with the clubhouse first. In terms of the clubhouse, Kurt, just flip to the next plan there. Yeah. All right. So just to give you an idea of location, this is that first, Kurt, can you hold up the site plan for a second? Just independently of that, if you don't mind. Just so I can show. Okay, so the clubhouse is located right at this first intersection when you come in. And what I've said in the beginning was that was really a marker for where it was, I knew the footprint wouldn't be any bigger, so we don't have any lock coverage issues and stuff. So this is a further development of the clubhouse where we are right now, that you'll see coming in. So this is that intersection coming in from the entry. This is that first right-hand turn, burn crossing, happens to be the, a road name that we're, that we're looking to do. And you'll see the, the site plan of the clubhouse in this area with the walkway systems that would tie to the parking on either side, back to a handicap ramp on this side of the clubhouse. Kurt, the full board that's in the very last one there. Where we are with the clubhouse right now is, we're still working on, just put it vertical. We're still working on some elevational issues with it, but the floor plan is pretty much settled down. So essentially, you have an L-shaped, this is the front of it right here. We're working on this, this, the massing of this building a little bit, but there's several things to point out. One is the use of an, sort of an L-shaped porch to kind of bring some outdoor space to the, to the area. It's a kitchen, a couple baths, a, what is that one back? There's a storage area back here, because again, this will be on its slab, so we need to provide some, some storage. There is, on the right-hand side of the building, this is where the post office would be. So in a lot of our communities, we have this sort of thing. People come every day, they pick up their mail, it's a convenient place for the postmaster to drop everything in one place. And so it, it also brings daily usage to the building, so it helps, it helps with interaction within the community. And while this ramp is shown internal, ultimately, the, by the time you get done, the ramp will be exterior to the, to the porch, so we don't disrupt it. But the other thing I wanted to point out was, we've also gone ahead and on this elevation over here to the south, we've put some solar panels on the roof. There was a request that we, we consider that, and so we, we are, we are putting those on there to, to accommodate that. This is simply to give you an idea of we're heading towards sort of a reddish color for the building, as being the primary color theme, obviously, there'll be other things. We've done that in a number of places, and it, it, it really works well. And so that's, that's kind of the direction we're headed in, but we'll have a lot more in our next filing, but I had promised you guys that we would do that. Kurt, pull that one down for a second.
Could you confirm through the board the timing on the clubhouse construction, please?
Yes. The, the clubhouse, the general timing that we would have is that the models would start as immediately as we could. Site work would then be either a little bit of it this fall, the bulk of it next spring. We're going to start the clubhouse next year. So we don't wait until the end, we like to do it earlier, but we would want to make sure the site work is in place in phase one before we start it. So we really like to get that done early on, because we want people to be able to use it. It's, you know, truthfully, it's a, it's a good marketing thing for us, so people know what it is that they're getting as part of the community. So that will happen as part of phase one. There is a change to, what you can see here is, on the plans that you have, the sidewalk that runs from this area down to Chestnut is on this side of the road. Based upon grading, as you start to get down closer to Chestnut, it really makes a lot more sense for it to be over on this other side. It will allow us to be more sensitive to the grades, because as you're coming in, into the entry, the grades are rising on your right. And so by having a sidewalk over there, it forces us to do some more extreme things with grading. So it really makes a lot more sense for it to be on the other side. So all we've done is, you'll see on the final plans, is we've switched it over and run it down on the, on the north side of the entry road. Drainage issues that are in there, I mean, generally, we'll be able to comply with that stuff, there might be a couple of waivers that come out of it, but you'll, you'll see the logic in all of it when the explanations come through. The one item that probably is worth touching on is the notion of site runoff. Could you put the site plan back up, Kurt, please? Thank you. So as you recall, we have drainage basins in, in this area that service phase one and two, in this area that service phase three, in this area that service phase four. In the general regulation is that you, your post-development is the same as your pre-development. So what's happening here is the drainage that moves off-site, it gets controlled by the side, basically the size of the pipe. So it, it get, the amount of flow, the rate of flow that's coming off-site is controlled to be the same as it is today. And so whatever the flow is that goes this way is going to be the same, whatever goes this way is going to be the same. Really, because of the impermeability of the soils of the site, all that really ended up happening is we had to make the drainage basins bigger, to, to store more volume in a heavier storm. And so if you've got a big bucket and your hole is that big, it's just, it'll just take a little longer for it to drain through into the wetland system and get dispersed downstream. So there's no flooding type issues, it's all controlled in that manner. A little more does go in this direction, but that's because a, a lot more does not go in this direction. in this direction. There is going to be a tremendous improvement on the side of Prospect Heights. Right now, it flows off in that direction, over people's yards, into their basements, and whatever else happens over there, it's not good. So by the development, we naturally capture it. And with the soils being impermeable, it has to go into the drainage, the drainage We've talked about the, so site runoff mail facility, not a through street, we've talked about that. Utilities, you'll see several items with utilities. Just know that we have, pre-submital, we had consulted with DPW and sort of worked through a lot of this stuff with them. The second issue is that this is a permitting set of plans, and so some of the specifics that are being identified would be specifics that would get part of a construction set that DPW would, it'd have to meet their requirements and their approval no matter what. So some of the explanations may be that this will be part of the construction set, we'll have to meet whatever DPW says. So you'll see some stuff in there about that. Let's see, permit plantings, lighting, we're in the process of doing the photometric plan. That's turned out to be a bigger challenge for me than I was expecting when I first went in it, but we're getting there, we're making some progress. So that's essentially a site plan that shows where all the lights are, and then where the, where the light falls onto the grounds, just to make sure that light does not extend beyond, beyond the boundaries of the site. Fill deliveries, there's an identification, we have gravel that we'll need to bring in over the course of four phases, it's really not all that, it's not significant, but what the peer reviewer is saying is you need to identify where it's coming from, and obviously, we can't do that. We have specified the quality of the gravel, which is one of the items that he identified. But we really can't say where it's coming from, because it's a function of the site contract that we end up using and where gravel is available at that time. So, but we thought the best way to approach this would be simply to, at the time, put in something that says, we've got a file with DPW, where it's coming from, and get their approval, and then give you guys a copy, you know, submit a copy for your files or something like that. We thought that would be a reasonable way of approaching it, so that it would be, I don't know how else to do it, quite frankly. In terms of all the, you know, cleaning of the streets and all those things, those will be in the details of our plans, and that's something we do standardly. So that's not a problem. It's just really, you don't know where it's coming from until you, until you need it. And then the final thing is, there's some comments in there about ADA. Doesn't really apply necessarily to the housing. Certainly, there are some requirements as part of the clubhouse, but, you know, as part of the building permit process, we will meet anything that we're required to meet. There's an implication that someone should give a very broad overriding certification. That, that will not happen, nor is that ever, I've never seen that, nor can it happen. Our architects will certify what we need to have happen with the, for the building inspector to give us a permit, and then it's not, not something required for housing.
David, do I have these most updated documents in my file?
You don't.
Okay.
You don't, and that's what I said early on. I said, we haven't, some of these we haven't given to that, I just wanted to give you sort of a preview of the direction we're going in to get, so you have a sense. This is not, I'm not asking you to say yay or nay on any of these, just so that I can provide some, some images to the directional information I'm putting out there. That's really all I'm trying to do.
This is actually not so much as part of your process, but more of the open meeting law requirements.
Okay.
So you're presenting them tonight, so they become a part of the record of the town.
Okay.
And so the planning board needs to get copies of those.
Okay.
Everything that's presented tonight, you can do it electronically or full size, whichever, but they need to have.
Okay, all right, we can do that.
Thank you.
Just know that they will change on the, the B twigs, yeah.
Absolutely, but it's being presented as part of the record.
Okay.
Electronic is fine.
I think that covers, yeah, I think that covers pretty much everything in terms of, you know, without going down the peer review list, item by item, in terms of the direction that we're headed in with all the different items. And, you know, any, barring any reactions that steer us in a different direction, that would be sort of the way you will see the response start to play out. So, yeah.
So this is really an opportunity for the planning board to express thoughts, ideas, comments to the applicant thus far about the peer review, so that the, to assist the applicant in responding to the peer review and to responding to what you'd like to see.
So, being a public area, I don't know if you guys had anything to say before I ask for any public comment, or do you have anything quickly, or you want to?
I have some notes, but I'll, if you want to go first.
Want to defer?
I can, I can go after you, you want to go?
Is it going to open it up to public discussion, it's discussion?
Okay.
Is there anybody here in particular that wanted to speak directly to 466 Chestnut? Good to see you again, Joel.
It's been a while. Joel Arbeidman, Woodbridge Lane. First, you know, I keep my ear to the ground on a lot of these projects that go on in town, and there's oftentimes real pain coming from the residents, that they're upset about traffic, or too much building, or the quality of the construction, or whatever. And I just want to thank the applicant. I've heard nothing but very positive comments about this project, and it's very heartening to see that. So I think that's just great. I had a couple of questions, though. I, it was especially concerning the traffic issues, and I don't want to make any comments about whether this adds a significant amount of traffic, or what the traffic studies show, but I have my own traffic study. I'm a very regular user of Chestnut Street, especially as a bicycle rider, which is not my focus. And I can tell you, whatever anybody thinks and whatever experts come back and tell you, come ride right alongside me on a bicycle, and you will see very quickly how dangerous Chestnut Street is. The speed limits are too high on there, and I have actually had incidents where I've had to call the police due to some very dangerous driving situations. So I was hoping, when I had heard about this project, that all the traffic was going to empty out onto Elliott Street. I'm not a traffic engineer, I really am not familiar with the trade-offs here, but I am a little bit concerned that, I know that it's very difficult coming out of Warren Woods at the maintenance shed, where we frequently go to assemble clubs that I'm with. To come out onto Chestnut Street at times is extremely difficult. This is at 10 o'clock in the morning, 11 o'clock in the morning, and even getting back in there off South Street, further up Chestnut Street, at maybe 3 o'clock. It's not easy to come off of those side streets. So I have no idea whether, what the volumes are here being talked about, or the frequency of usage and so on. But I would love to see the town recognize that it's a dangerous street, the speed limits, or the actual speeds, let's phrase it that way, are too high on the street. And I hope that you take the traffic concerns along Chestnut Street very seriously. The only other, I had just a couple of other questions. One, you know, Warren Woods itself is a very attractive area, you know, to go into the various ways to get in there. And I was just wondering whether any consideration or anything in this plan has been looked at with regard to sidewalks, either along Chestnut or possibly in Elliott Street. I understand that there may be a crossing created going across, directly across Chestnut Street to go to Warren Woods. I just wonder whether sidewalks, you know, whether this is the time to start looking at sidewalks on some of these roads, either as a part of this project or just to understand that that might be a valuable asset for the town to have in this general area. Right now, it's, it is totally auto-centric. It's all about cars on both streets. And if somebody wanted to come out of this neighborhood and walk down to Shaw's or something like that, or even walk down the other way to go to downtown, I'm not, you know, what, it's not safe, it just is not safe. I don't know what traffic engineer would tell you that's a good idea. It's just a dangerous, a dangerous environment up there. And maybe this is the time to put an end to it, not because of this project, but while we're looking at the area, maybe some consideration could be given to that. The only other thing I wanted to ask is, and I know there was some discussion of buffering, is the, I'm trying to understand what the view would be from the main Warren Woods area, say from where the maintenance shed is, for example, or whatever, if we put a barn there in the future, or whatever the town might consider. If we look across to this property, is that open area we're seeing, which I'm guessing is on the corner of Chestnut and Elliott, is that, would that be the main thing we'd be looking at, or would the houses further down on Elliott be very visible from that location? And what buffering might go?
That's the current field.
That's the current field? And where's the, can you, can you just point out where the 4H building is on this map?
At the bottom.
That's way up there, okay, so that's really good. That sounds, that seems great. And how much of the housing that would be above your currently planned entrance road off Chestnut would be screened by buffering from, a view from Warren Woods? I mean, would those, all those units be visible, or would there be, you know, screening there?
The best benchmark. The.
Almost had, thank you. The best benchmark I can give you is that this, this line here, which is sort of the open space line, is just on the other side of the stone wall that's out there. So that stone wall has some vegetation all along it, plus there'll be some vegetation behind it. So part of this whole process and the things that the town worked through, we originally had houses all out in here, and it allowed us to push it all out beyond there, so there's actually vegetated foreground. So it'll give you the ability to see the field vegetation and then the houses through. Yes, we get peeks of houses, I don't know if you look around, I can get peeks of anything, I suppose, but, but there's definitely vegetation that will be there, which has been, I think, a major improvement on a lot of levels.
Is additional screening a possibility to?
Well, in that area, it's all natural. It should be fine, and it really should be fine in that area, to be honest with you. You know, our screening focus has been more where we have neighbors, because the buffers aren't, you know, that, I don't know how many feet that is, but it's a long way to get to that.
Okay, Mark DeSoni, 49 Hawthorne Road. And good evening, and I have about three questions, but they're all going to be quick and easy, I hope. The road itself that it's on does not have sidewalks, but years ago, we had the Village of Americas put sidewalks down. Are they under the same conditions to do that, if they built that?
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat your question, please?
The Village of Americas was built, and they were conditioned to put down sidewalks down by the, why we're cementing down the road towards, towards Main Street, years ago. This has no sidewalks in the roads itself. Are they conditioned to put down any sort of sidewalks for safety reasons?
The requirement for Village of the Americas to install sidewalks was a function?
That was years ago.
Right, that was years ago. That was a function of the certificate of approval, the covenant, the agreements that were made. We haven't yet created any such agreement here.
Okay.
We're not at that point in the process.
Okay. And the open fields and buffer and all that stuff, this isn't even natural way it is? Have, so sorry, even minimal buffering is going to help everything in sight. And for traffic, I'll end it on this, everything that's new adds to traffic.
Hi, I'm Penny Moss, 16 Mountview Drive, and I am an abbotic to this project. I don't have any issues with any of the things that they proposed. Absolutely, Chestnut Street is a disaster, and I have to get off one of those side streets in the morning to go to work. And it's a lot worse when the snow piles block your view in addition to everything else. And, you know, that's, it's, but it's been a disaster for as long as I lived there, and at least they did finally put a traffic light down there. And I don't know, this may seem really super petty, but when you propose the name Warren Way, all I can think of is, oh my goodness, there's going to be such confusion, because right around the corner, we have Warren Road. So I don't know if there's a mechanism to make sure the street names, my street is named Mountview, and I can't tell you how many times my packages are delivered to Mount Gate, you know. And so I just don't know if some consideration could be made to just make sure that the street names aren't so similar to existing streets in town. But again, I do support this, so, thank you.
I can respond to the street name part.
So may, I may have misspoken, I'm not sure, but the, there's basically three names that we're looking at here, and we've checked them against any, any streets that are on the list in Ashland. So it would be Lantern Way would be the entry, and we try to relate it to the community. Many communities we have just have a, just one, one name to the whole thing, and there's just numbers within the community. Fire Department wanted there to be a breakdown by street, it makes it easier for them if they have to respond to something. So, so we have Lantern Way, Fern Crossing, and Kurt, what's that? It's on there, right? It's on this one down here, maybe? Old Stone? No. It's on, yeah, it was on some, that's Fern Crossing, and this one is like Old Stone, I forget what it was, but it has to do with the stone wall that runs alongside of it, so that's the direction we're headed in.
It's not Warren Way, is it?
No, there is not. You know, maybe I said something.
I thought I heard you say Warren Way.
Yeah, I could have, I could have misspoken something, I'm not sure, but those are pretty helpful, yeah.
All right. Do you have any other comments? I will, I'm going to open it up to the board. Before opening it up to the board, just due to a lot of the comments we are hearing, and I do believe the traffic study was done, right?
It was.
Can you do a presentation of that at the next meeting? And just present your study to the board? Open it up for comments or questions?
Not answering most of mine. They're going to do the gravel road for the cut through, and that's, I think, at the end of phase one.
For, for over 800 feet, you're going to just put in a gravel road after phase one?
Yeah, as part of phase two, we'll be doing that, so it's two ways.
All right.
So I continue to be impressed with your presentation and your thoughtfulness in considering the needs of the town and.